On one side and that's why it was pushing and it would swing back.
Yeah.
And that could then, as I can see in the jumping, was when it would come off of that and swing back to the center.
Time is four thirty P M. The Pelican Rapids City Council meeting of twenty-six March twenty twenty-four is called for order. I'd ask those in our council chambers, if you have not signed the clipboard by the back door, if you could do so before you leave this evening. And also ask everyone to put their cell phones on vibrate. We'll call member Daniel.
Councilor Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilor Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Councilmember Peter Marco.
Here.
Kate Foster.
Here.
Mayor Brett Fraser.
Here. I want to welcome each and every one of you in our city council chambers, those that are joining us by Zoom this evening. Remember, our city council chambers are on Pelican Rapids YouTube channel and also seen on Channel fourteen on Wednesday evening. I just have three announcements for the next couple of weeks. Tomorrow, Wednesday, March twenty-seventh, a conversation with the mayor at Historic City Hall. On Saturday, April sixth, the showcase Pelican Rapids, Pelican Rapids High School. And also on, then on Tuesday, April ninth, at four thirty P M. is our next city council meeting. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, if at all, please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two, citizens' comments. Anyone in our council chambers here for citizens' comments, or you are not on the agenda? Anyone? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three, additions and deletions to the agenda. I have one deletion. Please delete item number eight, Legal Services of Minnesota, Crystal Davis. Please delete item number eight, Legal Services of Minnesota. Any other additions or deletions? Any other additions or deletions?
Move through the deletion.
Motion second, discussion. 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Votes the same, motion carry. Item number four is approval of consent agenda, which I'll read. Item number four A is approval of council minutes of March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Item four B is approval accounts payable listing. Item four C one is utility report from February twenty twenty-four, which is in the packet. Four C two is liquor store report, which is in the packet, and four C three is financial report, which is in the packet.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second. Motion second, discussion. 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Votes the same, motion carry. Item number five is resolution two zero two four dash zero four approving the sale of city's general obligation temporary improvement bond, series two zero two four A, which was in our packet. This evening, we have Tammy Omdall from Northland Security joining us by Zoom. And she's going to explain the, this resolution at the end of this, we will need to act to move on it. Tammy.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Tammy Omdall with Northland Security, here to present on this item. Northland serving as underwriter on the delegate bond. I note for the council, you had in your packet a resolution that had complaints in it. That was purposeful, because it was not so this morning when these bonds were sold that we had final results. So I'll present on the final result in advance that you're considering resolution. So as noted, the purpose of this item is the sale of the general obligation temporary improvement bond, series twenty twenty-four A, in the final principal amount of five million four hundred and ten thousand. The city is selling these on a temporary basis because the city plans to pay off the twenty twenty-four bond with the combination of the loan that the city will receive from the Public Utilities Authority for the Highway sixty-nine and Highway one oh eight project, as well as anticipated state grant proceeds. There was a timing issue that the city needed to have these funds available to make contract statements in advance of receiving from Public Utilities Authority most of the time. So I would note that these bonds are very short term. Their principal amount, five million four ten, the final rate on the bond is four percent. The bonds will mature on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. The city will not make any payments prior to that date. The interest payments that are due on these bonds on twelve fifteen twenty-four and two fifteen twenty-five, as well as final payment date will be paid from the bond proceeds. At the time of the holiday, in advance of that, the city plans or anticipates that we will need to issue this new bond series to prove the main importance of this project. To be determined, but I believe estimated to be approximately an amount of five hundred and twelve thousand. I mean, this warrant will be filed on that model, it's a real question. They're temporary bonds because it was to provide short-term financing. Final payment date is December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. And there is no rating. These bonds are meaning the purchaser of these bonds will hold the bond. The bond cannot be traded, and the bonds are not callable. With that, Mayor Council, Gladys Hilton and not sure if you receive all of the information from this afternoon, but I can speak to any questions the council may ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Any questions? Lance or Danielle, did you have anything to add?
No, we're very thankful that Tammy's got this all. Very good, Tammy.
Thank you.
So will the final, will the numbers that she just quoted be put in the resolution to be published in the press?
Yeah, well, they, they sent, it won't be put in the press, but, or, they sent a nice copy, because that will be the official signed one and everything. It's all the numbers in it.
Any other questions? Are you in the audience? If there are no other questions, I'd ask for a motion to approve resolution two zero two four dash zero four.
No more.
Second? Motion second, discussion. Discussion.
Is the money being put aside right now?
I couldn't speak for that. It has not. The bond has been priced today. The actual closing date, which I have to look here, I'm getting my specific date. The actual closing date is a few weeks from now, when the city will have the proceeds. And that date is?
Is that April twenty? End of April?
Let's keep looking with the rest of the motion, so I believe that is correct, but I don't want to misspeak, so. April twenty-fourth is the closing date.
Yeah, there it is. It's April twenty-fourth.
I'll answer your question. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Votes the same, motion carry. Thank you, Tammy, for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Have a nice day.
You too. Bye-bye. Item number six is Pelican Rapids Aquatic Center change request, which is in your packet. And we have Kelly Janizowski from Hammer's Construction here. And he's going to, first of all, give us an update on the project, and then we'll move to approve the change order. Kelly?
Good evening. So, Hammer's Construction, Kelly Janizowski, building the new aquatic center. Everything's going pretty good. We're waiting here to get this snow out of here, and then we'll finish up the interior concrete of the building. The mechanical room has been poured, and the interior block is set. Right now, we have the mason on the exterior side. Basically, he finished up all the exterior brick around the mechanical pool room. Aqualogy showed up about a week and a half ago and started digging in the exterior pipes going from the pool into the pump room. So they paused there now, and they backed over, they couldn't force them again. But they'll be back in. They are going to start setting equipment in that pump room. They already got quite a bit in there. Plan is moving forward, basically finishing up the net pump room, getting them in there, the floor even epoxy, so. Kind of just pushing that way, and then we'll move the leasing back into the interior building. And kind of finish that up. Most of the roof hasn't been put on. We were six pieces of trim short, so. Hope to see that here at the end of the week, early next week, and finish that off. As soon as the exterior brick is on, we're basically pushing to get the exterior siding and steel trims on, get that building wrapped up on the outside. I guess, moving from there, Aqualogy being here a little sooner than expected, but depending on how the ground conditions turn out, trying to get them in and get them guys finished up by, I don't know, I don't see an issue with it. They'll be done by then, but it'll just be more on the pool side. Feature set. I do have another change order that will be coming.
Before, before we move on to change order, are there any questions regarding the pool?
There'll be another de-duct coming for that parking lot on the asphalt side, so hopefully it'll be able to get that on the line.
Okay, we can move on to the change request number seven. Thank you. Yes. That is, that was in your packet, change request of a, the amount is five, five thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars?
Do you want to just clarify, Kelly, this was just for the site work with the parking lot, and there'll be another one coming?
Correct, yeah. Basically, with that parking lot being removed, we have the electrical de-duct already, and then now this is the site report.
And this change request is a de-duct.
Mr. Booth, change request.
I'll sign it now.
Motion second, discussion. 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Votes the same, motion carry. Thank you, Kelly. I will move on to item number seven. It's wastewater treatment facility final clarifier number four, discussion. And there was a few page printout at that. This evening, we have Mr. Tim Boomer, Municipal Service Company Incorporated, and also staff members from People's Service, Greg Stan, Dennis Gallagher, and Cal Miller here. And I don't know if Tim or Greg, you want to start the discussion?
We'll get it going.
Okay. I believe you have some pictures to share with us?
You guys want to start with pictures? This is the easiest one, is this?
Yeah, that's probably a good one.
Do you want to explain to everyone what we're looking at?
This is, we have two clarifiers, final clarifiers on the place where I'm at. This is clarifier number four.
This is number three.
Yep, this is number one.
This is picture number three, when it was finished.
Yeah, that's a picture too, yes, but four is the one that's bad. What happened is about a month ago, let's say it was, we started getting a failure at the clarifier. And the system is a little tripped. What you can see down here is, this, this is all submerged underwater. The water line is right over there, I'm guessing. Everything is spinning, except for this very center column. But everything rotates around, and this is a forty-nine foot diameter, so this is the center of it. So you picture, they're big. It's a lot of weight on there, I think. One thing I just noticed, all of this is getting supported by the top, by the top catalog supports at the top, and it's kind of hanging there. What we found is, at the bottom here, the center column, is it's warfing. On one side, it's like warfing, the other side, it's not. And this is the pipe where ink comes in, where it distributes out and stuff. So what's happening was, as it would go around these arms, there's scrapers and stuff on the bottom, you can see. On one side, it would be dragging, and then once it gets to the other side, it would flow more freely. And then eventually, it wore so much on the center here, and it got worse and worse, and eventually it dragged that way too much. Now it's tripping out. What really caused this? We're not a hundred percent positive, and it was gone on level four. Or one of the things we learned with all this process is, with the old way the wastewater pumps are run, you've had RAS, which is return activated sludge, and RAS, which is waste activated sludge. With this new MVBR setup, we do not have to use the RAS side. So with the new setup, we do not have any options with RAS pumps at all. All we can do is waste. What did we learn? You can't see it on here, but on this, this arm right here has a bunch of holes in it. And them holes are suction for the RAS side. So we were never using the RAS all the time. There's a hole, I think it's right here, a four by four hole. That's how we were wasting every time we would pull the sledge off, you know, basically completed our wastewater treatment. Every time we do it, it'll go through this still some hole that's right here, instead of this whole arm. Ken's theory is probably because we were never using this RAS, that it was dragging too much, and that could have been what caused it also. So with that being said, we do have the RAS pumps and stuff there. Where there's probably going to be, as I said, ten to twelve hours of computer programming, so we can start wasting with this arm-fed sweep as opposed to wasting all of the sump hole, which is here. And we have been, we still have, from the three clarifiers, this one is operating normally like it should, and we make sure we're running that RAS one, so we make sure we get it built up, so hopefully that one's going to last forever. But as you can see in there, I don't know, Tim, you want to explain more of what you're, what we have to replace?
I wanted to come up there and.
What is the depth of sledge on the bottom there? What are you doing?
What kind of depth, so I didn't hear a lot of what you said. Okay.
What is the depth of the sledge?
We have a three. I never measured any, the depth of the sledge.
Like, was it abnormal?
No.
No, I don't think so.
No. Well, was it getting thicker on the end or something? I don't know.
There was no foreign object in there you're going to find?
No, that's what we thought. We were going to find something, because one of the brushes dropped off, because there's brush, clean brushes, and we thought maybe that was jam there, but we had a dream of the thing, so hopefully find it.
Now, Tim Boomer, you know, he's very familiar with his system. He's done many repairs down there over the years, he knows the inside and out. Fortunately, unfortunately, but he's sort of the expert in most. Tim?
Well, yeah, I think this, this is a suction, I didn't give you talking about the suction header.
Yeah.
This has got holes in it, and you've probably seen it when it was new. And this is a picture of, that I happened to just snap when I was walking by. I didn't build this. But Richard was building it, and I was doing something else, and I took a picture of it for some reason, so that's what we have. The center column seal is right there, that's gone, and then there was another seal on the bottom. So if either of those seals are damaged, it will not suck sledge through there, even if they did run the return activated sledge pumps. It will always only pull this back to the, back to the hopper. It can rotate like this, and, and so this one's got holes or slots in it all the way to the outside. And that can just push a load of sledge, and they have some pictures of it when it was pretty dirty. A lot of stuff gets built up on it. So when it's clean like this, it looks like probably the sledge would just flow over the top. But the reality of it is, that gets built up with rags and, and different kinds of sledge, so that's dam is much higher than a cleaning mechanism. So it could really be pushing two feet of sledge ahead of, ahead of this on one side. That's never being worked down to the center. There's a slope on the floor, but it's maybe a twelve to one slope. It would probably only fall, maybe it's even less than that, probably falls about six inches from the outside to the inside, this hole on the floor. It's not really enough to cause the sledge to flow. So you could get a big load out on the outside, and of course, this is keeping the floor clean ahead of that all the way around, but it can't get rid of this. And so I, I think finally, yeah. Dennis had said he thought it was jumping, and he was believing that there was a problem with the drive. But I, I've, since the only, this is right through that pipe, it's about this wide. That's a twenty-inch center column. It's anchored to the floor underneath this, which is called a sledge manifold. There you can see part of the seal. Part of the seal retainer, I think that's gone because it not only wore away that, but it wore away the sledge manifold too. And so that's, there's a third or half the way around that twenty-inch column. That's just a standard twenty-inch, scheduled forty pipe, so it's got about a three-eighths wall thickness on it. About probably an inch wide into it. I think it would just, it would drag so hard and would pull hard, and then finally, it would, it would just have enough tension on it that it would swing back to the middle again. The whole mechanism just hangs from the top. It kind of rests partially on this center column and on the bridge. And so if, if you could go down there, you'd be able to push it back and forth a little bit with some effort, but it doesn't, it doesn't ride on the bottom of the, of the basin. It hangs off the drive. And so it could pull up to the side and then swing back, and that's why only half of it wore out. When it's, there's another seal on the bottom, and there's probably a picture of that. I know Dennis had one below that. That's the suction header right there again. There's a, should be a squeaky on the bottom of that, that rubs on the floor, and that's all, all gone. The stainless steel squeakies on the scrapers are also worn away. And you have a center one somewhere?
Did you take one?
There's more suction.
Yeah, there's a couple of them.
Yeah. Yeah, I have one.
Two over the bottom.
I guess.
So we're operating two final clarifiers at this time?
Yeah.
Do we need both of them?
We're only operating one.
Huh?
We're only operating one right now.
Right now, but we need two.
Yeah, that's if they're really usable like, like that. It would short circuit every, the RAS sledge would just, it wouldn't even pull it through the header if you tried to do this, because it's just going to short circuit both underneath and, and across, because the water is lighter than the sledge, so that's what's going to move.
So we think the, the cause that led to all this is just too much drag on the motor essentially, because it was auto-wack?
I, I, I.
Because it, because it wasn't pulling sledge on the whole?
Correct me on some of this, but this was built in one phase, and then the next phase, they converted the old primary or final clarifiers to MVBRs, a different treatment process. At that time, they quit using the return activated sledge pumps because it's a single stream process with the MVBRs. You don't pump sledge back to the head of the plant anymore. So they weren't used anymore. And probably S E H should have converted this to a regular clarifier at that time. Probably should have taken the suction header off and the sledge manifold off and put a scraper on the other side. So it worked like a regular clarifier instead of a two-in-one clarifier.
Did you notice anything in construction error?
What's that?
Was it construction improperly or?
Well, not, I don't, it was built for the process at the time, but then the process, when they went to MVBR, I don't think it was considered.
It wasn't?
Because that, that, this clarifier was built like that, because S E H didn't have anything to do with this project. And, you know, you could pick on that if you wanted to, but that would be a pretty good catch for them to.
Most clarifiers are built with one basic suction, you know, there might be two separate spots, but it's only one pipe leading and one set of pumps. So it's just if you're wasting WAS, W A S, or returning the RAS, it's just bells turning solid is. Here, it's two total separate pumps, and that's probably why S E H missed it on the su.
Yeah, it would, it would have been an easy thing to not, not touch, but it should have probably been converted.
Do we drain the tanks down on an annual basis?
No.
Should we?
At least, I would, I would consider doing it every three years.
Yeah, that's kind of a adjustment call against how often to inspect it.
How, how are you returning the sledge now? Is it set up on a timer? Is it manually?
There is no return on this problem. With MVBRs, you cannot return at all. All you do is waste. There is no returning back.
Yeah, that's what the change process is. I'll, I'll start right here. This is, I haven't sent these to you maybe, I don't know.
Well, that's a picture of it.
Sledge and. There is a picture, right?
Well, that's, that's hard to see on that one. This is the seal maker, and it's gone on that side. That's just the bottom seal. Then the rubber seal, and there's actually two seals. And half of it is, you can see part of it screwed down, the half is gone. And it could be inside, or it could be, it's gone.
In the repair process, are you going to take that manifold off the one side?
Missing.
So this arm that circles around is equal?
You have to come ask the team how they send it out.
Okay.
That's weird. That's why we got him here and then you can explain things a lot better, he's.
This is a kind of a, it's a.
Even though our phones have probably lessened over the years, you still need for two final clarifiers.
It needs to be done in case things like this happen.
And the whole process.
And in the winter, you wonder how you have them both running, because if one is old, I mean, that one probably won't be able to start. Because we wouldn't be able to start this one, they don't really, this goes and then.
So, yeah, to use the RAS pumps, that needs to be, that needs to be repaired. If you didn't use the RAS pumps, then that should be taken out. And that other arm rebuilt with scrapers on it. There's a separate hopper, there's another hopper underneath this. Yeah.
Okay. In the rebuilding, are you going to remove that manifold on the one half?
That would kind of be, that's an option. You don't, you wouldn't have to. But if you don't remove it, then you have to make this work. There's a truss there already. It doesn't belong as far as this truss, because it only needed to support that for enough, there's about, I don't know, six or eight feet. This truss is about six or eight feet shorter than that truss. So the truss would have to be extended, and then the scrapers put on that side. And then you would, you wouldn't necessarily have to get rid of that, but you wouldn't have to take, repair the seal. You get rid of that.
The manifold.
The manifold.
To get rid of that.
This is the manifold, and this is the suction header.
Okay, the suction header. That'll come off.
Well, it can't.
Well, if you don't take it off, this is going to start dragging again, right?
Not if you repair. Um, not if you repair these seals and use the other pumps inside the building.
Okay.
It would just take some, probably some pretty good monitoring to make sure that you've had an equal amount of sludge on this side as that side, so that you knew that this was working. And, and that wouldn't be a daily monitor, that might be, uh, once every two weeks you measure the sludge depth ahead of this as opposed to ahead of that.
We'll make it daily.
And you'd want to, want to, there's going to be sludge ahead of both of them, but you want the, the percent of solids to be pretty close to the same.
Okay. Does the sludge have to manually probe or does it show up on the computer?
That's going to be, that's a sludge depth.
That would be, yeah.
Yeah.
So what are you recommending you do? I mean, what are you recommending? What is the best way to fix it and what's the best way to move forward?
I would go along with either leaving that or taking it out. Uh, probably if I was going to be operating it myself, which I'm not, um, I would get rid of that because then you don't, then it's always going to be the same whether both pumps are working, um, and all you, cause you might run the waste pump for five minutes an hour in order to make it equal maybe after running a return pump for seven minutes an hour or three minutes an hour. So that would be, once you had that set, it's going to probably always be the same. Because your goal is almost always the same. You don't have a lot of variation in going coming into the plant. So once you had that set, it's going to probably always be the same. The only thing that would ever change it is if either one of these seals starts to fail again.
So is that a less expensive option or a more expensive option?
Um, it probably, I, I would say if, I didn't really figure out the other way other than to repair what you have, it would not be more. Um, and I, I don't know that it would be less either because of building another section of truss and scraper for it. There'd be some more fat there, I guess, but it would not need more.
What is the history of the sludge depths between the two clarifiers? Is, is the flow getting split evenly or is one?
Well, generally when, when both of them are running, it splits evenly.
Is, is the sludge depth even?
For the most part, yes.
Okay. So this is not just-
We have, we, we have, I haven't realized the, the RAS that pumps never were. Uh, for one, number one, number two, the valves were not programmed properly until December. Where pump three and pump four, they would actually pull off the RAS side or the WAS side. Um, so it's been running like that for many years where we weren't going to pull it off the one side and we weren't getting off the side. So.
And that were, uh-
My side, if it was up to me, I would recommend that we keep the RAS system in there so we can actually start using the RAS system like it's supposed to. Instead of putting new, new scrapers on there. Cause the scraper's been going a four foot, four foot square hole and it's going to get full of mud, the full of sludge and it's only going to pull so much. And eventually we'll have more sludge in there than what we wanted first place. Cause I know last year, two years ago, we had, you know, last year when I had to shut down clarifier three, cause my, I served my speed reducer went out on me from December and, and I didn't get a new one until April. It took us a month and a half, almost two months to get that back online as far as just wasting on it. Uh, cause I had to keep flow going in there to keep it from freezing. And, and, but it wasn't turning whatsoever. So all the solids were just staying and the pump I went, went in the pit, but it wasn't pulling anything from anywhere else. So, once we got the fire back up, got my new, uh, speed reducer in and installed it, I could tell that it was quite sluggish because there must have been a lot of sludge in there. But like I said, it took us, it took me probably every bit of six weeks, six to eight weeks just to get it to work several problems.
So your list of replacement items and cost, that there's no picking and choosing, it's the whole works, correct?
Uh, you mean the parts are all?
No, the list in our-
When you list it, that need to be replaced?
We have to do all that.
On your core?
We can't, there's no picking and choosing what we're going to do. It's everything, nothing.
You wouldn't need to, you wouldn't need to, you have to do the first three things.
So after that, what's the best option? What, what would you recommend about the rest of it?
Uh, the, that RAS, what WAS piping was just to tie the two, uh, discharge headers back together so there were more options to where the RAS pumps could go. That, that doesn't need to happen necessarily. Uh, if it did, you could use your RAS pump as waste pump also, but the way it is, you can use the waste pump as RAS pumps. Uh, you know, not really as RAS pump. That pipe has been abandoned and closed. So everything is going to go to the digester. You can pump from either clarifier to the digesters with the waste pumps, but you can't pump to the digesters with the RAS pump. Unless-
We create a valve.
I, I, it's just create a valve, that's all it is. I can change valve fifteen to sixteen or open up valve sixteen fifteen and then run, uh, with RAS pump three down that line to the digesters. I can bypass our, our RAS side.
The danger included on a list you would recommend to it is?
Yeah, the, the other thing on the density current valve hold supports, you, you can get a good look at them. Those aluminum angles hold it down.
Oh, no, I really haven't. Some of them are-
Those are virtually failed.
They're probably in bad shape.
That was, uh, there's quite a bunch of them. Yeah, that stuff might start falling in the hole.
Do we have money in the sewage?
Well, obviously none of this is in the budget, but in talking with Peter Bradshaw at the PFA, um, we have that replacement fund that we, I mean, it's, we're, we are required by PFA to, to have this fund and we have to pay so much a percentage every year. It's right around eighty thousand a year is our budget for it. So in that fund, we have roughly five hundred thousand dollars and we have to request PFA to use this. So I've been in contact with Peter and he says we should be able to use funds out of that, out of that fund to pay for this project, so.
And that money is set aside for purposes that's such?
Basically, for situations like this, yes.
So I'm, I'm still a little confused on which is the best way to move forward? Removing the manifold? I think you, you're in the line of keeping the manifold.
I would, I would recommend that keeps the manifold because the more you scrape, just picture this, it's one big clarifier.
I, I can see it. I get it. I just wonder how, cause there's two options on there.
This is even all.
And all the, every time it turns, it's going to throw some sludge in that pit. At this point, it's not going to take anything off the yard.
And if you keep the manifold, it's always water on the sucky covers over it, sucking it all the way down.
Right, that didn't get slid to the pit.
Instead of just out of the hopper, it's always collecting the sludge at the bottom. We have, there's some of them built on that, there's a drain in it that's got the drain. Don't get if you ever have the drain off. They all have this suction on it and that's the option.
So this is some new thing that they decided to do away with the manifold on this clarifier?
Yeah, I didn't even see in another facility, that two second sets of pumps, it's got two pipes and everything coming from the clarifier could be their least to return.
That's not a, a very common way.
Yeah, it's a bad idea.
Naturally, yeah.
You know, you guys speak a whole different language. I just, wow. So that is plum fall when it's running, right?
You guys wanted to tour the plant?
Well, I've toured it, but I, I didn't see that.
Now, now it's, now it's-
Oh, okay, now I can-
Now's the time to come down and look at it because one is full, the other one is empty.
Okay.
You want to come down tomorrow or something? I'll be more than happy to-
But you're looking for a decision just tonight.
There's nineteen feet of water in there, nineteen foot ten, um, up to the, up to the weir. Uh, so, uh-
Greg, am I correct?
Quite a bit.
Looking for a-
Well, we'd like to keep moving forward because-
When the sludge is in there, it's, it's not a solid sludge, it's, it's, um, thicker at the bottom and thinner at the top. There might be three feet of sludge in there, but some of it's a half percent, some of it's at one percent and two percent and so on.
So there's only a scraper on one side?
There's a scraper on one side.
How does it, I don't understand how it can be?
Well, you can see the scraper's right here. Them, they're angled, right at the bottom here, there's three different ones. And they, they're designed to pull it towards the some pool that's right there. And then on this side, it's got the feeder arm that pulls up on the, because it goes around.
One scraper feeds the next scraper as it's going in. So it follows up one scraper, then the next scraper catches what falls off of that and continually moves it to the center. On the other side, it doesn't move anything to the center, but the pump that steps out of underneath there is pulling through those and it relies on the head of the water above it to push the sludge into those openings.
Yeah, I would like to kind of look.
Yeah, it, it would be pretty clear once you can see it.
So with the, the quote that's in the, that was provided in the packet for the sub, with the, with the contingencies and the engineering and legal administration stuff?
I, I will clarify that, um, a little bit. I did just get an actual, I didn't have a quote for any of the parts. When I put this together, I just based it on some estimates. And I did get a quote for the parts and so, um, the estimate for the first three was sixty-one, two. And, you know, I hate to blow my own horn, but, um, it was pretty close. It came to fifty-nine, four. And, uh-
Let's see what happens when you keep going here.
That, and that eliminates that contingency thing because there is no contingency left, you know? Um, we know what it is going to be. Um, so that takes care, that engineering, legal admin thing, that's more of an idea of what you could assume are your own tasks or your own time, the city administrator time or whatever, however you allocate that within the city itself.
What about the engineering?
But, um, it's just a-
Is that your engineering?
No, it's, it's, um, just, uh, words.
Okay. So we can elim, we can eliminate those two costs?
You would take, yeah, that twelve six sixty is just an estimate of what you would spend within your own city to see that, see it through. That's not anything that, that has anything to do with me.
So those two bottom costs were not included in that hundred and forty-nine? Correct?
Right, correct. Don't need the two bottom costs. Not any, not the, not the contingency anymore because I, I, now I know it. And since these guys cleaned it up, they hadn't, it wasn't cleaned up when I looked at it, so there was some unknown things. And these guys cleaned it up and they're nice, uh, job, so I, we could see what actual needed to be repaired.
So what's the number we're looking at now?
Uh, fifty-nine, four. And that number isn't on there.
We know?
What's the total, what's the finish, what's the finish number?
What's the, what's the total cost?
Fifty-nine, fifty-nine, four plus-
Repairing everything.
Everything.
Putting everything on your list except for the bottom two, what's your, what's the total?
Um, well, with, with the paint?
Yeah.
Everything, cause one needs paint, right?
It should be, it should be coated.
Yeah. We don't want to cut corners?
It's not, the coating is starting to fail in some places, but it's not failed to the point where you're getting a lot of corrosion at.
Well, we're getting-
But it, within three to five years, it should be, it should be taken care of.
We should do it now, maybe, so.
So we're just going to do it now. So what's your total?
So you're looking at one hundred and forty-nine thousand?
One forty-nine, four minus, um, two, minus three, one hundred and forty-six thousand. With the paint.
We have the money in the PFA funding to pay for it. I'm moving to go forward with the repair for the, whatever that thing is.
Labor.
Take it out of the PFA funding. I've just learned more about sludge than I ever would. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? 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 Harry Nuttall in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say aye? Motion, Harry. Thank you, gentlemen. And you'll, uh, last, you'll connect with these guys, whatever we have to do.
They always find me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, we're done. Item number nine, bring all ambulance updates. Looking at a free ambulance agreement for service, which was in our packet. And this evening we have, there's a tall ring call and Butch Murphy here. Gentlemen, if you would like to come forward, please. There may be a few questions for you.
Oh, yeah, that's what we're here for. Um, they're asking us, probably to see something that should go down in price and settle off. Which isn't, uh, real common, now it is, but, um. So, we're asking for subsidy again this year, obviously, but, uh, the caveat to that is that we, we have, uh, shortfalls financially within the, the service. And it's not just us, it's, uh, just one of the reambles service in the nation, uh, that has these issues. Uh, so what we were looking at trying to do is come up with a number that would be the band aid for this year. And that was the six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. We're asking all the townships and cities and so on. Um, and kind of parallel with what current ambulance is doing is they are asking for a dollar amount per household or per, per household, right?
Per household, per year.
Right. So what we did is if you were given wrong data from the county, so the numbers are wrong on what we submitted to all the, uh, townships. Yeah, they're just not inaccurate. So these are, we're, we're looking at these numbers here for total households. Those are like, maybe a vacant lot, somebody who's still paying a, uh, they pay a, they pay tax on their, uh, that vacant lot. Uh, what we really want to capture is the homes and, and structures that, um, where there would be a potential call cap. Could be a home, business or maybe a trailer in the woods. Uh, and that's why your guys' number went down is because before we were going by per capita, uh, the rate then was at twelve dollars and fifty cents per capita. And, um, let me get that here. Hope and, so twenty thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars. Is what we're asking for. However, that's lower, but in order for all this to work is we need all the cities and townships to participate. And so, uh, so far we have, um, Norwegian Grove and a impervent township that has paid. Other than that, nothing has come through. Um, and there's significant number of debate throughout all the different townships and cities as well, as well as with the county. A little bit of the history behind that is that for the last six months or so, six or seven months, Butch and a couple of the other, uh, U.S. numbers were attending, uh, task force, uh, EMF task force means with the county. And they have, uh, had significant interest in this and they understood the, uh, the issue and how that there should be a meeting to help, uh, support, uh, ambulances in the county. Um, then at the last minute, they said, let's go, I want you guys to go back to your townships and cities and, and start there, cause we can't help it. Because we can't help you. So that's what we did and that was at the ninth, ninth, tenth or maybe eleventh hour that happened. So this is up to you guys if you wanted to support that. And right now we have, we're not expecting anybody to necessarily support us. So we're the two townships and of course, like I mentioned, the county is not interested at this point. Yeah, so hope they'll open up some debate between folks and give you questions if those are there.
Well, I know I appreciate the rate going down. I mean, you don't know that at all. Why aren't all townships and cities charged? Why don't they pay if they expect ambulance service?
That's a good question. I can't answer that. I'm not them.
Even though they don't pay, you go into their territory, right?
Correct.
For patients.
So the public and townships including the city here have been contributing for twenty years, so years. Eighteen now, now including this year, eighteen years with us before that was the lock family. But the consensus that I understood was that the city and the townships of public and want to make sure that the ambulance remains here. So you're not waiting for an ambulance from Detroit Lakes, Herm or Ferguson Falls or what have you. And we're totally okay, obviously, with having us ambulance here and we.
But are we receiving that service now?
Yes, you are, absolutely.
And I mean, is there somebody at the ambulance garage?
Absolutely.
All the time?
Yes.
We were called before, they were Elizabeth and Earhart.
Yeah, that's, we have to kind of work with our, where our calls are and try to cover those calls where they are and so on. So that's why you see the ambulance going up to now fifty-nine all the time. But the focuses are always bringing the units here where there's a call there and they're out there. Yeah, we're here ninety-eight point three percent back, you know, otherwise we're all the calls and so on.
Just to clarify that if an ambulance from Pelican here goes on a call and has to bring that patient to Detroit Lakes or Ferguson, then they have a replacement ambulance that comes up and strategically places itself in the water or might come all the way up here.
Yeah, depending on call volume and such like that. Four, ten questions from the.
Is there, our number went down, so that's not a concern with our budget because of that. Is there any way this could present, be presented to us like in the autumn? Because our budgets are due in December.
So like my brother had mentioned at a county meeting, it's like we're paramedics, we're not, we're not politicians or council folks like you folks, right? So we don't understand all that stuff. So now we've understood that, yes, those budgets need to come in much earlier to be considered for the next. Next year.
Okay.
So we're realizing that now.
We really did hope the county was going to provide a solution for this and truly we had maybe three, four weeks before they said, eh, it's a township and city problem. Well, guess what? Within three weeks, every township had their township meetings all in the same night. So we were in a mad panic to try and get as many as possible. And of course, by that time, that part for the year, they're already did the budget. So we were behind the eight ball, honestly, sorry.
Questions from the council?
What's the household or per capita for figuring out this twenty thousand nine sixty-four?
So we had, the number that we came up with was two thousand seven, or two hundred, sorry, two thousand five hundred and seventy-seven. That's not an accurate number for your community.
Yeah, because of the ambulance. So it's really pretty close.
I, we got the accurate number from the GIS department. The gentleman there actually came up with the figures with our PSAs. But I just looked at that today and obviously didn't include the Pelican Rapids number. Right, so I don't know that.
So it's roughly around twenty-five hundred.
How many vegan laws do we have off the top? We're at under a hundred, right?
Twenty-five hundred is the population. Are you asking for the population?
My bad, I can't see.
Total households is one thousand seventy.
I'm sorry. Yeah. My bad.
One thousand seventy. Is that his household?
On this, well, I guess I have it on the sheet that they provided to us earlier, yeah.
And the population is twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, twenty-five seventy-seven.
We have budgeted for this thirty-two. Well, I can tell you from somebody that's been a passenger in an ambulance and that's had family taking in ambulances, it's a service we don't want to do without. And I happen to also feel that that twenty thousand six ninety-four is a little low. Since we have budgeted, I would say increase that to twenty-five thousand.
So hypothetically, what happens if the county decide, well, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna cover all of this. Just refund you whatever that might be.
We'll cross that bridge.
Yeah.
The wheels of the county go about as fast as my drink right there, so we'll see what happens. And I would make that a motion if that must be ordered as a motion.
There is just one question from a chat here that just, if the county doesn't, you know, what is your long-term plan? And how do you, how would you plan to get the towns and townships on board in the long term?
Well, we could come back next year, you know.
Hit them before that budget?
To get all the budgets. But, I mean, we're gonna try to model through as much as we can, but, you know, we're starting to use our own properties and our own assets as collateral at this point. So there's talk, there's lots of services in the county or in the state, excuse me, that are dropping from advanced level to a basic level. There's lots of, being kind of creative on how to cut paths here and there. We're down to poor now, we've trimmed all of our fat too, so. But that was a joke. So there's, there's ways of reducing service. The ambulance isn't necessarily going to go away, but yet we're going to bring down service enough to where we're bare bones. Maybe just have a basic life support service versus an advanced life support service.
That's a contingency, a contingency. We don't want any of that. We're a republic, so I think starting with better information sooner. Township, cities and counties is our game plan. Looking for a state answer? That's not likely. And obviously federal, definitely not likely. So all the boroughs sits eight years out for a federal option at Bayface Medicare.
And our Medicare rates are close to twenty years old and.
They were not that good twenty years ago.
Really?
Now that was our last significant increase.
All right, I worked with Bart when Lock had, I saw what the Medicare would pay on our items and it was not what we had to fight for.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Any more discussion? Our contractor, Ringall, how long is that good for?
A year.
What?
So the first.
No, they will have ambulance service, excuse me, garage from Pelican.
The, the disagreement that's signed every year?
No, when, when Lock's left, you know, we wanted an ambulance location in Pelican.
Oh, I.
Is there a formal document?
I haven't seen, I haven't actually looked for one of them either.
Okay, I was just curious. Do you know Tall? Any idea?
Well, I kind of assumed that the incurred agreement just kind of covers that, but if you wanted something to.
No, I was just curious, no, that's fine. Okay, go through the screen.
I personally know you guys do an incredible job. I mean, thank you and support.
Yeah, we appreciate that greatly, you know, those are things that you just don't hear every day. It's kind of a, I think it's a more, I think, this job. Same with you guys.
It's one of those things, we don't need you until we need you.
Yeah, so the mayor of Fergus was at our station, kind of gave a, did a little tour of our station down in Fergus. And he said the same thing, where it's like you normally think of it until you need it. And and now we're, we're to the point now where the helpers need help. And this is, this is something that I have never dreamt would happen in my career. EMS in general for the entire, entire country, the way that things are going is, is we're just, we're going backwards. We're, we're not, we got no progress right now. Everything is just stagnant, we're going, we're going backwards, so.
Anyway, the area is not just about so large and services like the world metropolitan area. They're reducing their services in a lot of urban areas also.
Any more discussion? Any more discussion? Hearing none, the motion was to approve, was it twenty-five thousand even? For one year period service, Ringall Ambulance Service? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Holds the same? Motion carried. Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
I would like to see you guys come back at a future date.
Absolutely.
Before we get into the budgeting process, but kind of explain your financials to us so we understand it better.
Absolutely.
I was a former EMT in a volunteer service, so I know how much that struggled to stay afloat, you know, and it didn't get done without the city and the county over where I was at, but you've got a service that I don't want to see as low, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we don't want to leave this room. And I've said, we pass it, we're, we're just thrilled and honored to be here. And of course, the invitation goes to anybody here that if you need a tour or want to tour or get a, get a little more ideas of what we do on a daily basis, we're always open to that.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a great year. I remember Ken, if someone had to fire him, we have a, we have a chief, Chad Hansen here this evening, Chad.
Here, I've been talking to Lance a little bit about this stuff. We tend to do the truck schedule replacements. It's not finalized quite yet, but we're good calls. What I am here to ask for is half of that one-time money that you guys got, set aside.
Public safety money.
I don't know the exact number, it was fifty-five thousand something.
The total we received was one hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars, so he's asking if we can split it evenly between the police department and the fire department. So half of that would be fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents.
We'd like to earmark that money towards a truck. We are reverting back on that wildland truck, our rescue truck, probably needs more attention for now. And also that truck is higher than we anticipated.
Cost of which truck just made it there?
Our first truck, our, I can call rescue one. It's a mini pumper. It's an F five fifty chassis that goes on on every call. Cost to replace it is ballpark one thousand. We had it on truck scheduling for twenty-eight or twenty-seven to get replaced. With this money, we're hoping to try and bump that up a year. We would be asking for the amount to be loans that expire, then we can take that money and do that stuff along with this five thousand.
That's my suggestion for this motion would be to split the money for the fire department, don't earmark it specifically for trucking. Maybe something else, so.
Is this the truck that we looked at when I came down there or the other one?
I looked at quite a few trucks, but the first truck you looked at was the wildland truck.
Yeah.
That was the one I initially asked to get replaced.
Yeah.
We're gonna put that on the brakes for right now and look at just repairing it. Figuring out our budget of what we had to replace trucks. The second truck that you looked at, I would say the yellow one, they're all yellow. It's an F five fifty, it's the only F five fifty chassis down there. Like I said, it's the first truck out, I didn't pay attention to the first truck out. It's a two thousand and four. So that would be the truck that would be next on. That answers your question, right?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Any other questions for the chiefs?
Are the police okay with this?
You guys okay with getting fifty-five thousand dollars?
I'll pay them. Absolutely, they're good needs.
So when a truck gets bumped on the schedule like that, how does that, I mean, does that screw with the rest of the schedule? The replacements.
The schedule was pretty updated, there really wasn't a big one replaced, so.
We only had four on the schedule. We had five trucks that worked on the schedule. And now we're trying to work all nine of them to fit that schedule and enter the equation.
Main goal is to, we have that specific four things at debt service right now. We don't want to necessarily increase that. We want to, so the, the one debt service went off, we made the last payment this year, there's going to be another couple in the next few years. So we can keep replacing the equipment and not having to reset that service is our main goal. But I mean, realistically, I think there might have to be a little bit of an increase there just because of interest rates and the cost of these, this equipment going up big time. But that's the goal and hopefully with this extra public safety money, we can bump it up a little earlier and use it to our advantage.
Any other questions for the chief?
I'll move, we split this money equally between the.
Fire department, sorry.
Yeah, fire department.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Holds the same? Motion carried. Thank you, chief.
We have a second request. We're requesting to sell our ATV and take it on the service. We have, I think it's a ninety-five Polaris four hundred. It needs some repairs after our last wildland fire that we had. And we don't feel it's necessary to repair it. So we would just like to take it out of the service, sell it. Put that money from selling it into our future budget to put towards a vehicle or something.
Hold you advertise that?
Facebook or credit also. I moved this down.
Motion and second? Discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Holds the same? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. At number eleven, EDA updates. We have our economic development director, Jordan Grossman, and she's joining us by Zoom this evening. And there's three bullet points on their agenda. First one is Lake Region Electric Cooperative Revolving Loan Fund, which was a document in our packet. And she's also going to talk about showcase Pelican Rapids and her EDA board opening. So Jordan, take it away.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I am home today since there is a tremendous amount of snow and no school. So I hope you can bear with me and there are no disturbances as I have a houseful. So first, the first thing on our list is the Lake Region Electric Cooperative Revolving Loan Fund. This is something that has been an asset in the community. Been looking at the previous building of Essentia St. Mary's Clinic in Pelican Rapids. It was primarily funded by this revolving. It was primarily funded by this revolving loan fund. I have spent some time with Tim Thompson and Greg Larson from the co-op to learn a little bit more about this fund. Um, the, the money's been paid back to the fund, so there is a plethora of money available to the community. The EDA has looked at having this type of loan fund available through the city. We are still in the research process as to what type of funding source would be best to have our own. But in the meantime, this is something that's already existing in the community and something that I plan to advertise on the city Facebook page and the city website. And I thought this would just be another opportunity to talk about, um, the fact that it's available to the community. It is a little bit under advertised, so this could be a good way, um, to get the word out about the fact that it's available. The revolving loan fund essentially is money available for businesses or any commercial loan that will help increase the tax base for Pelican Rapids. Any questions on that?
That was just an FYI item.
It was.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Any questions for Jordan? Hearing none, free to move on.
Perfect. Second, we have Showcase Pelican Rapids. Um, I would look for a motion to approve a small purchase, um, contribution to have a booth at Showcase Pelican Rapids, which is scheduled for April sixth at the Pelican Rapids High School from nine to three. Um, we would have a booth there and the EDA has given ideas about what type of information we should have at that booth. It's a fifty-dollar contribution. Coming out of EDA funds.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? Motion second, discussion? 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 Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same? Motion carried. Then we have the EDA board opening.
We had an EDA board member resign due to, uh, uh, business reasons. Their interest is still with the growth of Pelican Rapids, but not able to serve at the capacity they'd like. So we have an EDA board opening. If you have any recommendations, you are welcome to send them my way. Otherwise, um, I will look to fill that seat and present it to you here, hopefully within the next month.
Any questions on the EDA board opening? Okay, I see no questions here. So thank you for joining us by Zoom this evening, Jordan.
Yeah, thank you. Have a great day.
Item number twelve is police update, we have a chief of police, Todd Quaidens here, and he has about, uh, six different topics to discuss. The first one is the oath of office, Officer, uh, Brienne Brandonberger.
We're joined with by Brienne Brandonberger. Um, I'd like to do our oath of office, just like we did in Iowa when I started, so we'll begin with that. I, Brienne Brandonberger, do solemnly swear.
I, Brienne Brandonberger, do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of a police officer.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of a police officer.
Within and for the city of Pelican Rapids.
Within and for the city of Pelican Rapids.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
She'll sign a copy.
Yes. Well, I know you've been with us a while, you're officially welcome.
Thank you.
Pelican Rapids Police Force, and I'll, I'll sign this document, and I'll give it to me and you. It's your thing. You do have both signatures now, we'll be pleased with that.
She's resigned her shift.
Okay. Okay, next item, body camera slash squad camera policy review, which was in our packet?
So I just want to start with, so we've got, there's a lot of data here today, I'm gonna admit that. Um, the first couple of pages that you see following the oath is, is Minnesota statute regarding the recording systems, what the requirements are, what the requirements are of our policies. First off, I want to be clear that this discussion is just kind of to make you aware that we're gonna have another discussion next, at, at, at next month's meeting. On page one of the statutes, six-two-six, eight-four-seven-three subdivision three, um, within that paragraph, it says that we have to have public comment. So, we'll post, we'll post our policy. We'll post that we're gonna have a meeting on the policy, and allow the community to come in and have comment if they so choose. Um, and that's actually when we're gonna take action on these policies, but, um, I wanted to, I, I, I gave you statute that, that explained why we need to, to, to review this. I gave you a sample, um, policy regarding portable audio and video recorders, which would be body cams, video recording device, audio recording devices. Um, and then we continued, and I gave you a sample policy regarding the mobile video recorders, which would be the video cameras that we have in the squad cars, so. Those are just some, some different policies that I, that I, that I share with you, so you'd have plenty of time between now and next month to kind of, uh, go through there, see if there's any questions on it. If you have questions tonight, I can answer them as well. It's kind of a, it's kind of a boilerplate type, those are both boilerplate policies. That hit all the requirements for state statutes, so. And again, we're required to open it up for public comment this month. To be honest, from my experience in the other departments that we've done this, we don't get a lot of attendance at people, you know, for that purpose, so.
Counsel, have any questions this evening? Before we hear next meeting?
Yeah, something comes up, you read through there. There's a table we're doing there. Um, if, if, that happened, I'll fix, but if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me, I can try to answer ahead of time, or I'm more than happy to answer at the next council meeting as well, so.
Okay, then the next item, the squad radio needs, and there was a, also a document in our packet. This one, we need a motion.
Yeah, I'll be asking for a motion to pass, um, the purchase of three, uh, squad radios. I'll tell you when I first got offered the position, had a conversation with sheriff's office, and just as far as for potential needs for coming, coming here, um, I hadn't even started yet, and they made it clear to me that we had some radios failing. You guys had already started the process of replacing the radios that the officers were carrying. But those weren't the ones that dispatched, and they were, they were in need of replacement too, I don't want to say that they weren't. Um, dispatch was already getting fails on two of our three squad cars. Um, and a lot of tech I understand, but somehow the computer, the, the, the radios are able to send out a signal, the, the dispatch is able to tell when they're shutting down. And if you've, if you ride along in our squad cars, two of them frequently go into maintenance mode. Um, I was sitting there, thankfully I had my, my portable on the other day, and I didn't even realize that it had gone to death. I was sitting out here talking on the phone, and all of a sudden I looked down, it had been working all morning, and it shut off on the maintenance, the maintenance mode. As we discussed with the portables, they are end of life. The, the company that sells Motorola in Minnesota were very clear that the option to fix them is on the table, that they would be more than happy to try and fix them, to update them, but they said they're end of life. Motorola itself no longer produces any of the parts, we would have to buy them from a third party, and they wouldn't necessarily guarantee what would happen, and so my assessment of that conversation is we should move towards purchasing newer radios, not trying to fix, do a band-aid to fix, so. That's where we're at. There's, there's, just kind of the summary of the situation. Um, the quote that I got from, from Motorola is eighteen thousand, thirty-one dollars, sixty-eight cents. My, my thought, I, again, not a budget item, my, my thought was that we would use some more of that public safety aid money, that one-time money to, to cover this expense, so it's not a huge budget.
How much of that money do you have left?
We have approximately a little over thirty thousand dollars, so more than this. Very thanks.
We have nothing there, please, yes. We approve the purchase of the squad radios for eighteen thousand, thirty-one dollars, sixty-eight cents. Second, motion second, discussion? Discussion?
Is everything encrypted when we're done with portables and then the cars?
Yep, uh, these, these are encrypted. Um, I will say we could potentially have saved some money and not had them encrypted when, when these were rolled out across the state, that, that twelve, fifteen years ago. Um, some entities did not use encrypted. It is the recommendation from the dispatch center, it's my recommendation that we stick with encrypted. So yeah, it's, all of our stuff will be encrypted at that point.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same? Motion carried. Next item is firearm purchase, which results in a document in their packet. Chief?
So, um, there's some, there's some wants and needs on this request, and I'm comfortable with whatever the, whatever the city council chooses to do. We have a need for two more, for two more firearms. Um, based on, uh, the number of officers we have, or we're hoping that we will have, um, we need two more, two more, um, Glocks. At this point, if we order them, um, this is, this is the vendor that I got the quote from, I don't know if I've got the quote in here. The vendor, he's the only Glock vendor in Minnesota that has the, uh, law enforcement pricing. When I called him initially, they had about six of them. When I talked to him last week, they're down to one in stock. And they maybe don't even have it this week now. When we move forward, or if we move forward, um, we're probably looking at four months before we get them, so. Looking to, um, can we stick with the, the, the nine millimeter Glock? And part of, part of this process is, is to start moving towards a green dot system, you'll see that in the top part of the, the, the quote there. Um, it is the direction we are moving in law enforcement with sighting systems. Um, is to have the green dot sight on there, and then sight acquisition, um, quicker. So I added that on there, that's actually what the, it says Glock forty-five MOS. The MOS makes the Glock capable of, of having a green dot sight on it. But then also the other piece that I would like us to move in the direction of, and all the firearms that we already have are capable of handling a flashlight mount. Um, they're designed to have a flashlight mount. Um, and I'm asking that the two that, that we're adding right now, we, we purchased the, the flashlight mount that goes on there. Okay, so that's that first block of prices, which comes in at just over two thousand dollars. Obviously, there's a need when you start getting different, different, different firearms, you need different, the different holsters, especially if, if you're carrying a firearm that doesn't have a flashlight on it right now. There's another big chunk that has to be, you have to hold that flashlight, so. So again, but, um, that next chunk where it says new holsters, um, that's where that three hundred and thirty dollars is. If in fact, the, the council decides they want to grant my overall request, again, the top part's a need. The bottom part where I talked about weapon lights, the weapon lights, that's, that's a want. If in fact, the council is willing to add the weapon lights to all the officers' weapons, then we would have to get all officers new holsters. So again, a holster is designed completely different if it has a flashlight or not, so.
Can you give them the option if they want to, want the light or not?
I'd be happy to, I think most are gonna have to say they want the light, it's a, um, it opens up your hands, right? I mean, I pull my flashlight out, I can actually take my finger and turn the flashlight on, so. Um, and where it's the extra light, and I saw my flashlight out, but I can point at two things then, so. Um, I'll, I'll give every officer the decision whether or not they want it. It does impact, like, this was a firearm that's right for a long time. Um, a Glock is designed to have a certain amount of twist, okay, that people don't realize that the gun has a little bit of give to it. When you put that flashlight mount on there, it impacts how much twist that firearm has, it impacts the mechanics of an officer shooting it, so. Some officers might say that they don't want to go down that path. But, um, let that be the officer's discretion.
And all the, all the crew, their weapons are adaptable?
For a flashlight, absolutely. That has been such Gen one of Glock, they've been able to have a flashlight rail. Gen two. So again, we've got two prices on there, one for, for my, my, my need and one for my want, so. Again, uh, not, not a budget item, and I apologize for bringing up a not a budget item, um, but the money still exists within that, that public safety, to use that for this as well. Go ahead.
So the over, the overall request is for four thousand, one hundred and eighty-two guns?
Correct.
Counsel, scram.
So the flash, is that like a flashlight? You point the gun and then the, the lights?
So it is mounted right below, so this, this holster happens to be designed to have a flashlight. Do you hear the rattle? I don't have a flashlight on it, okay? Um, but this one's designed to have a flashlight on it, it is mounted right below the barrel. There's a switch on the backside of, so like right along the trigger guard, there's, on the backside of the flashlight, there's a little toggle switch. I can use my finger to turn it on and off. If it's not automatically on, I would pull my firearm and then I would turn it off.
And you still have a green dot?
The green dot is, it would be, would it be an addition as well, yep? And the green dot is, the green dot is operational day or night as well. The green dot, the, the green dot intensity, typically they have a, a photo sensor on them, and so during the daytime, when you bring that up in the viewfinder, it's, it's brighter, because obviously it's gotta be brighter for this one.
Green, green dot's on top of the gun, or flashlight's on it?
Oh, you're, you might be thinking about laser. This is, we do not use, I'm not a laser fan. We won't have, the, the flashlights wouldn't have a laser.
Okay. This is not a question for you, but for Lance Daniel, didn't we buy a couple of guns a few years ago?
Actually, uh, Jeff did replace a bunch, but they, it didn't cover, if we were fully staffed, we would have bought for what we had, correct?
Yep. We, we had, he, I believe it was last year, wasn't it? Because last year, he just, he just got all new firearms, but again, he didn't buy, he bought enough for what they had at the moment.
All right, and we still have those?
They're, they're not, they're, they're, they're deployed, yep, yep. We, we are using everyone that.
Okay. Right now, Chief Quaidens is using his own firearm, I believe, correct?
Yes, definitely, that's what we want to get them. It's the same, the same one they're carrying, it's just mine, so.
So if we're gonna adapt the current firearm to use the flashlight, that's work you can do in-house?
So, they have a rail, they, they, they are, they're designed for, there's no adapting of anything, they're designed, it slides on it, and it hooks on.
As far as the training, I mean, you can train your officers on it.
Yep, and I would suspect most of the officers have used firearms with flashlight on, flashlight on the desk.
Counsel, so which of you did that when I worked here?
Okay.
My, my counsel, scram.
I moved to purchase the ones that I need. Four thousand, one hundred and eighty-two.
Four thousand, one hundred and eighty-two, we have a motion and a second? Discussion? 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 Just hearing none, all in favor, so.
Well, just so everyone's on the same page, so I think we have it figured right, where the public safety money now is down, the police department part of it is down to like twelve thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars.
If we had that.
After all of this.
I appreciate that, I know the officers will appreciate that as well.
Any, any other discussion? Carry none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the saying? Motion carried. Now we'll go on to the other items, uh, hiring process, and maybe an update in our packet.
Just a quick update, you saw the update in the packet, um, you had approved, I believe it was at the first meeting last month to reach word of a hire, um, contingent on several things. We have decided to move on from that, that candidate at this point, so just wanted to make sure you were aware of that, so. Um, we, the posting is still up, and we're still taking applications, so.
Do you have a close date for that, for this one now, or just?
Until filled. Until filled, so.
Okay, next item, gambling ordinances in our packet.
Yes, so again, this is something for, for more, a, a little bit of discussion here, but no actual action here today. I know in law enforcement, we regularly come asking for things, we don't generate a lot of monies for the city, so I am coming up with a way for the city potentially to have some funds to help, help offset some of our expenses on occasion, is I am throwing forward here, uh, language regarding the gambling ordinance. This is more about initiating a conversation before we really get into creating a gambling ordinance. I guess I wanted to find out if there was something the council even had any desire to do. Um, there are cities out there that have gambling ordinances, um, city by state statute, and on the very back page, I included a, uh, page from the League of Minnesota Cities, where it talks about local regulation is allowed, um, is allowed to exist, where we can basically implement a ten percent tax on gambling, gambling profit. And like I said, this is more about a discussion of whether or not you want to direct us to come up with tooling on this language, if it's something the city's interested or not. And I will be honest, with, if, within the language, I'm sure if we go out, we can find a lot of different language. I did indicate that the, the, uh, money that the city collected, uh, the city collected on the, the gambling tax would be used to offset costs and expenses for the police department and the fire department. Complete transparency, you can do whatever you want with that money, you can use it for something else, you can use it for the solid waste.
I'm not a fan of more gambling tax, no more ball tax in the state, I'm not a fan.
So this is something we're gonna talk about at a later date also?
Nope, well, we, sure, we can, um, I'm.
I mean, this is just an FYI for the city.
I guess, it is an FYI, I guess it's trying to find out if the council is interested, um, in us coming up with language to actually propose in the future, or if the council would rather just stay away from the topic and leave things as is.
If we're gonna move forward with this, we have the higher attorney to write the language, correct?
I understand the language, there's boilerplate language, the legal Minnesota cities even have boilerplate language in overall.
That's counsel's wishes.
I think if you're to move forward with this, you're gonna have to talk to the organizations that are using it, because you're in, we're gonna, they're gonna feel like we're stepping on their toes on that. I understand, you know, but.
Gaming tax, uber heavy, if you aren't aware, already. The, the gaming tax in this state is, is insane, what, what goes out for gaming, already. So I stated right off the bat, I'm not a fan to ask for more from the people that are fundraising or what have you.
I mean, I guess, um, what would the, what would the real world implications of this be? I mean, like is the, are the Boy Scouts, they're trying to sell raffle tickets? I mean, are they subject to, I, I, I mean, what, what, really, what's the implication? What venues would we touch that we are touching now?
So there's language in here, talks about, about churches, about schools, things like that, not, not gaming tax. It talks about not taxing bingo that's happening at like a nursing home type, you know, but like, it talks about raffles that are giving out fif- less than fifteen hundred dollars of prizes not being included. Again, you can set that threshold at whatever, whatever you want, or, right? And what is probably gonna more or less hit is your, um, pullbacks. Of pulldowns is probably what it's.
NE tabs, that's big in the state now. I mean, it's.
What is that?
Electronic, yeah, gaming.
So, well, in Pelican, Escobars and the VFW are the only places I can think of that sells pullbacks.
Perhaps, I don't know.
That's right up there with Sludge Man, I don't wanna learn.
And I'm just throwing out the idea, I mean, we can definitely revisit at a later point, if the council's over.
So at this point, I don't see much interest from the council, am I correct? We can always visit in the future, we do get our interest. Okay? If I have a third?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, cheer. Item number thirteen, uh, Second Avenue South East Greenwich Improvement Aisments, and there are two, there's three permanent utility easements, and also two temporary utility and construction easements. And Lance is gonna talk about all of these, but he's just looking for one motion to blanket all of these, if we're gonna patch that.
Yeah, that'd be fine, uh, this is all just related to that Second Avenue Greenwich, um, since the bids were out, we've got a bid out there, didn't want to award, didn't want to award anything until we got these easements in place, so basically, taking care of the permanent easements for the, for the, um, water and sewer mains that kind of aren't getting into that private property, so that's taking care of that, that's a little past problem, and then that's taking care of all the construction easements, temporary easements, and the permanent easements for the stuff that they will be newly installing, so just kind of takes care of all the easements. Uh, the city attorney took care of it all, and she's actually already got the signatures from the property owners, so we just need to approve it, so we can get our signatures on it and get it recorded. That way we can award that bid next council meeting. Any questions?
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve these easements?
One, two. Second, second.
One, two, three, second.
Two, first and two seconds.
Motion in a second, uh, discussion, discussion, discussion. Carry none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the saying? Motion carried, thank you Lance. Item number fourteen, updated rental inspection services agreement, which is in your packet. Uh, Lance is also gonna address this.
So this is our agreement with Sid, um, he does all the rental inspections in town here. And this is, uh, an agreement that's been in place for several years, but it's always been having to be renewed every year. So basically, the only change here is just kind of the red plate, the red things in the, in this agreement are the things that are just getting taken out, so it's just the ones that are specifying dates and things like that. So basically, all we're changing is, this will be in effect until, this will just automatically renew every year, rather than having to revisit it every year. So none of the amounts are changing or anything from what we're using right now, it's just automatically renew it, so we don't have to revisit it every year. If we do want it, we still have the option to get out of it, a hundred and twenty day notice, things like that, so. That's the only kind of a big change, is just it's automatically renewed, so.
So any change, or desire to change either by Sid or by the city, it can be revisited then also, right? Not just the terminate?
To approve the agreement. We have a motion in a second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Carry none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the saying? Motion carried, thank you. Item number fifteen, administrative programs.
All right, since the last meeting, just working with Parkland Mayor to set the agenda, and worked on things in the council meeting, attended the department head meeting, um, attended EDC and the DAD, completed the first group improvement request, and sent it to D for the pool project state grant, uh, attended a pool construction meeting, met with Matt from Lake's Country Service Cooperative about getting webcams working at historic City Hall for the street project, met with Burton, representative, about insurance options for the condominium association, set up the annual meeting for the condominium association, attended the planning commission meeting, and worked with the city attorney on the process for the request to rezone, contacted the PFA and researched possible ways to fund the wastewater treatment plant qualifier issues, worked with Northland Securities on the temporary financing yield for the street project, uh, met with my mentor group, attended a meeting about finding the state's development with Bob Schliemann and AB Baldwin. And this is just kind of an information thing for you guys, there's gonna be an open house ribbon cutting for the multi-use building, uh, it's been scheduled for Thursday, April twenty-fifth, at ten thirty in the morning, so all council members are invited to attend, uh, there'll be a photo taken at the beginning for ribbon cutting, and then, uh, Mr. Steve will provide a tour for the, for that new multi-use warming house building, and you may ask any questions there, so. I'll be sending out other reminders as that date approaches, so.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. That open house, is that listed as an open, uh, core?
Uh, depending on the time, I suppose we'll have, we should.
Yeah, we should, yeah. What did you say the date was again?
Thursday, April twenty-fifth, at ten thirty in the morning.
Thank you. Item number sixteen, mayor's report, just a few items, and heard a few, uh, since the last council meeting, uh, that attended Pelican Rapids Economic Development Authority meeting at the Area Queen on March fourteenth, also, uh, Economic Development Director Jordan and I met with, uh, West Central Initiative at Historic City Hall, um, March twenty-first, the discussion centered around solar panels on municipal buildings and energy savings, and just an idea that was thrown out there, and you're gonna get back to us, more information on that. And then, yeah, met yesterday with the Administrator Royce to plan the agenda for this afternoon's council meeting. Any questions?
Thank you.
Saying no other bids, or a motion to adjourn? Second? Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the saying? You need to adjourn, okay, good.